Okay, I'd like to call the order. The regular. Board meeting for Monterey Peninsula Water Management District for Monday, November 16, 2020 at 6:06. A roll call please.
Director Byrne, Director Byrne, here. Director Riley, Director Riley.
Here.
Director Evans?
Here.
Director Hoffman?
Here.
Director Adams?
Here.
Director Potter?
Yeah.
And Director Edwards?
Thank you. Uh, will we all please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, equal to liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Or not?
Thank you. Next item is oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information items, closed session items, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Oral communications are now open.
Please use your raised hand icon or press star three on your phone. I see no raised hands. Chair Edwards.
Thank you. Uh, next item is the consent calendar. Any board members would like anything, pull from the consent calendar? Any other public would like any?
Chair Edwards, Director Evans.
Yes.
Um, I had emailed Arlene about a, an administrative change to the minutes. Um, I just wanted to ascertain that that had been done.
Okay.
Um, yes, I will amend those minutes, uh, once, uh, the minutes can be approved with that amendment and then they'll be filed with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, do anyone from the public, want anything moved from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public?
I see no raised hands.
Thank you.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a move over. Moving for approval from the vice chair and second by Director Adams. A discussion? Roll call vote please.
Director.
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Director Byrne?
Yes.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven zero.
Motion pass zero zero. Thank you.
Excuse me, Director Edwards, I think it's got a raised hand. Um, would you like to take that public comment at this point?
Oh yeah, we'll take the public comment.
Thank you.
They have three minutes.
Uh, good evening, Tom Rowley. I'm sorry to tell you on Comcast, your Peninsula Channel Live is not working. Sorry about that. Sorry, I finally got on last time, but it's not working tonight. Don't know what the problem is, so I'm listening to the, your, your show, The Greatest Show on Earth on Monday, third week of the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Everybody get on that. I see Mario on it. Okay, now we're going into presentations for outgoing directors. Vice Chair Jeannie Byrne and Division Four Director Gary Hoffman, uh, general manager.
Arlene, can you queue up the?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Yes. Well, it's, it's never enjoyable to say goodbye to a parting director under any circumstances because they dedicate a lot of their time, energy and knowledge into making this place a better place. Um, so here we've got some presentations. This is, I guess, how we have to do it virtually these days, right? Um, so, uh, both directors, Hoffman and Byrne, will be receiving plaques honoring their, uh, years of exemplary, uh, exceptional service to the community. Um, they will look like this from the ribbon cutting of, uh, Pure Water Monterey, uh, which both directors were in attendance. Uh, Jeannie is four from the left and Director Hoffman is two from the left. And the, uh, rest of the board was , uh, in attendance in various, uh, state, uh, stages. I think Mary, you were there as a supervisor. I don't know why we didn't get you in this picture, but, um, next slide, please. Uh, Director Hoffman was appointed in November of 18, uh, to fill out the remaining term from, uh, Bob Brower in Division Five. He brought experience in the engineering field and experience with the division of drinking water with the state and quite a bit of knowledge about, uh, engineering procurement and the water industry. He served on the committees of the water supply planning, water demand, administrative committee, and the legislative advocacy committee, and was chair of the water supply planning committee, uh, in one of those years. Director Byrne, um, lucked into getting an extra year on her term by, uh, uh, when the electorate got changed for special districts from odd years to even years. So she had a five-year term, um, and a four-year term. I don't know if I messed this up, if it was nine years, Arlene, or, no, it's 11, right? What's?
Yes.
No, it's been nine. So my apologies. Elected in, uh, November of 2011. Now that would be 11 years, wouldn't it? No, that'd be 22. So it's nine. I, I can't.
It's nine. I can tell you it's nine years.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a five-year term and a four-year term.
Good God.
So, uh, she finished out her stint as our vice chair this year, and she has served on practically, if not all of the committees that are active. I think the only one is rules and regs, and you're probably on that for a year as well, but we don't have that committee active anymore. So, uh, water supply planning committee, water demand committee, public outreach committee, administrative committee, legislative advocacy, advocacy committee, went to Washington DC for us for lobbying and Aqua, and served as a chair for three different of those committees. Um, quite a bit of commitment. Um, I guess she's not giving up her planning commission role in the city of Pacific Grove, social state in, in our public's mind and, uh, and doing activities. But for both, we appreciate your service, your volunteerism, and, uh, your commitment to, uh, this, you know, oddly difficult issue here in Monterey Peninsula. So thank you for your service, and I give it back to the chair.
Thank you, uh, general manager. Uh, comments from the board members. Who would like to go first? Okay, Director Adams, you can go first.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, Jeannie specifically, I just want to say how much I have enjoyed working with you. I have enjoyed the individuality that we have shared within a variety of Pacific Grove events, as well as being in Washington DC together. It was always very enjoyable to spend time with you. I learned quite a bit from you, and I appreciate that very much. My hope is that you will continue to, uh, move forward with all of the various, um, issues and, um, programs and, uh, and policies that you have tremendous background and knowledge in, and that I think you, uh, you totally enjoy. Anytime anyone cares enough about public service to run for office, it's very important. So thank you so much for your years of service to us. And Gary, as a president of the district, thank you for your two years of service here on the board, where my hope is that you will, um, continue to pursue other items that you find enjoyable here in the county. And, um, please know, if you're supervisor, my job is to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Adams. Director Potter, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jeannie, I, uh, couldn't agree with Mary more on her comments. Honestly, very to the point, very much appreciated. Your years of public service have been incredible in all aspects. And, uh, the city of Pacific Grove and the county as a whole and the water management district has been incredibly well-served with your volunteerism. Gary, um, I've never met in my 22 years on the district, somebody who was more detail-oriented. You did an incredible job of actually, I wouldn't say nitpicking, but getting down to the very fine details that needed addressing. You did a great job. I really appreciate it, and I agree with Mary. I hope she'll find another spot for you in the county. I am relieved, however, that you didn't pull anything off the consent calendar tonight. Thank you for that. Take care, Gary.
Give Director Potter. Uh, Director Rowley, since your mic is open, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Uh, Jeannie, Je, I, I just want to thank you for reaching out to me when I was kind of a pain in the neck, I guess, to the district, well, well before Major J. And, uh, you reached out and said that some things that you need to know, so get a meeting. And you were telling me about Los Angeles, AM, and the, uh, implications around that. And I, I just felt like, I just appreciated that so much. Also appreciate the business point of view. Uh, the district needs that, and you represent that. I've, I'm always a colleague, and I appreciate that too. Uh, Jeannie, I want to say, we moved on one, uh, I don't know, strange committee together with Dave Potter and you at Dave's home, on the, uh, general, uh, the general manager's evaluation. I learned more about you, I learned more about Dave Potter, in those two hours than I have in, in, in 14 years worth of working with Dave and the roundabout. And it was, it was a fun time. I just appreciate that, and I remember that as well. So good, well, good, good luck to both of you.
Director Rowley, uh, Director Evans, uh, you have a floor.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Jeannie, I want to thank you for welcoming me onto this board, um, five years ago, and for taking me under your wing and mentoring me in how the board runs, and the different committees, and encouraging me to, um, to, to really, uh, dig in and give everything that I had to this board. And I, I really appreciate the lessons that you've taught me, and serving alongside of you. You've been, uh, you've been a friend, been a mentor, and, um, I will miss serving with you. Uh, Gary, thank you for coming onto this board. I think you have bought, brought a different flavor to us, and you have forced us to think in ways that we, we would not have come up with. And I really appreciate that. It's a, it's always wonderful to hear, uh, differing opinions and viewpoints, and what you have brought to this board, I think, has, uh, made us a better board. Uh, it may look like we're arguing, but I really appreciate the dialogue that we've had. I also agree that I hope you stay active in public life in the area, and, um, I think you have a lot to offer. It has been an honor serving with both of you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Director Evans. Uh, I want to thank the vice chair, Jeannie Burns, for her service, uh, for the 11 years that she had put up. One thing that she have done that, that, that the rest of us trying to do is, and some of y'all all did, is complete a water project in Phase One, Pure Water Monterey. She did an outstanding job in water supply and negotiating those things. Um, we, I'm gonna miss her. She's been a great voice on water demand issue, on trying to get things better for the community. And that, we, the board, have not forgot some of those issues, like Fort Abosio and Naples Graduate School of our water supply and about water demand. So we're gonna carry on those issues. Uh, I want to thank you, Vice Chair, for a good job. Now to the second vice chair, Gary Hoffman, I want to thank him for his service. Uh, since I got back on the board in two years that, that you unserved, you've been a great help. It may sound like, like Director Evans said, we may have been bickering, but you brought out good points, and, and, and we took notice of your point that you unwrought out. You kept the board honest and, and straight, and you probably hear, uh, uh, some of that tonight when we, when, when the general manager gave his report, because I haven't forgot, and I know the board hasn't forgot, some of our issues. But I want to thank you both for your service to your districts. Now, uh, vice chair, I'll let you go first, and then I'll let, uh, Director Hoffman have the last word.
Thank you, and thanks for all the kind words. Um, I have thoroughly enjoyed being on the board and working with everybody. Um, it's been a great experience. I, um, obviously will still be around the community doing, um, planning commission and chair of the board and et cetera, and, um, always welcome any questions that the board might have that revolve around permitting and projects, because that has been my background and expertise. So I thank everybody for working with me, and it was a pleasure working with everybody. So thank you so much.
Director Hoffman, you can have the last words on this.
Well, Chair Edwards, how ironic, huh? They're not gonna snap from duck. Um, I say that, that I really appreciate having had the opportunity to serve, um, on a board. It was a, a very enlightening for me, um, to serve on, um, on, on a board as opposed to being, uh, general manager, being a regulator. So this is quite a life, an experience that I'll never forget. And, um, uh, and the interactions with each of the board members, um, again, um, I won't forget it. It's, um, been a really positive experience in my life, and I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Arlene, could you, uh, find out, anyone in the public want to comment on our outgoing directors?
I see two raised hands. Caller, uh, please, please comment. I believe this says, please present your comment.
Appreciate having had the opportunity to serve, um, on a board. It was a, a very enlightening for me, um, to serve on, uh, on, on a board as opposed to being, uh, general manager, being a regulator. So this is quite a life, an experience that I'll never forget. And, um, uh, and the interactions with each of the board members, um, you know.
That, so we're just getting time delay on Director Hoffman's own statements. I think this caller may have just left his microphone open.
That's probably AM, coming off of AM.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Arlene, could you, uh, find out, anyone in the?
Yeah, just sign that caller off, please, Arlene.
I see two raised hands.
Uh, uh-oh, we've lost Arlene.
Yeah. So can you take it over, General Manager?
Please present a comment.
I think so.
Uh, Sarah should be our pick up.
So Sarah, we need to mute that caller, and ask for input from the second caller, which is Susan.
How'd you get in? I clicked on Seaside.
Yeah, it's Tom Rowley, just, let's.
I'm, I'm having issues on my end as well.
I wonder what would happen if I clicked on Seaside and it let me in. They said that you don't belong. Oh, don't belong. Any member of the public, any member of the public.
Tom, mute your phone, Tom, or it's terrible.
Excuse me, can we please stop this meeting and start the meeting? It's inappropriate for us to be hearing such personal comments.
Exactly, and Sarah says she's having trouble stopping or controlling the meeting. So we have two people with. Arlene, are you, uh, back?
Dave, you can't cut all the mics off?
No, we, uh. Susan, you're, Susan, you're.
Am I on? Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to thank the Director Hoffman. I also found you very thoughtful and very thorough, and I think that you did often bring up issues that needed to be looked at. I sometimes didn't agree with your analysis, but I really appreciated your thoughtfulness and thoroughness. And Director Byrne, your long-term commitment and help in building a water supply has been an enormous gift to this community, and I want to give my appreciation to you as well. Thank you both.
Okay, any, any other person want to do a follow-up on our outgoing director?
I see no, I see none.
General Manager, come on this side. Arlene, I got that.
Uh, good care again.
Susan, Susan, let's mute, please. Arlene, please mute Susan.
I'm, uh, I'm trying to do that. I'm having connectivity issues.
Or Sarah.
Here we go. All right, just a moment.
It's the same for me with the connectivity.
Okay.
Okay, so Susan is now, um, muted. Thank you, Sarah, if you were able to do that.
All right. Okay, so, um, this is item two on the general manager's report, and, uh, which should go relatively quickly. We're only a month into the water year. Uh, next slide, please. And there's going to be some changes in what you're used to seeing. Um, this is the Monterey Peninsula Water Resource System, which is the Carmel River, uh, alluvial aquifer and the, uh, seaside groundwater basin combined. Um, yet as additional resources come online, you're, they're not going to be pumping from either of these two portions of the resource. So you can see that the total to date is slightly under the target, which is good. But then when you compare to last year, the, the, uh, water year 2020 that just ended, we're seemingly significantly below the target, or below last year, which was, uh, 860 acre feet. Well, the reason for that can be seen on the next chart, where Pure Water Monterey has now come online. And so there's reduced pumping possible from the river and from the seaside basin as a result of Pure Water Monterey, um, which, uh, you can see in these numbers. And then again, San City, uh, the dilemma that, uh, actually Director Hoffman has pointed out multiple times, why do we budget at 25 when it seemingly comes in at far less than the next month that'll come in at 25 and so forth? So I'm still kind of swinging back and forth, but you can see now that the, the sources of water are getting, uh, more diverse. Eventually, ASR and Table 13 won't get lumped in with the cease and desist order calculations either, because we'll be off the cease and desist order, and we'll be able to look at these in a different light. But for now, these first two charts are, uh, could be confusing for people who've ever spent any time trying to decipher them in the first place. Uh, next chart. So this is one month of the water year to date, deliveries for customer service, or production for customer service, rather. Um, you can see we're better than last year. But remember, the effects of COVID-19 have not been really completely, uh, and we will talk about it next month after we've had a chance to look at the, uh, monthly data, uh, that we expect to come in here in November. But, um, it's hard to compare this year to any other year because, uh, things have changed structurally. Um, at the bottom, you can see that, uh, the 12-month moving average of, uh, pumping is still below the, uh, what we call Rule 160, the pumping limit that's established every year. But it is inching closer due to, um, the tri-nail ramp downs and kind of where we're headed. So we'll be keeping our eye on that. Next slide. This is recorded rainfall to date through the end of October, so zero. But what I want you to see on the next page, uh, is that the red line, which is current through yesterday or through the weekend, um, shows that we actually have had perceptible precipitation. And, uh, a few of you may remember, we had a pretty strong downpour, uh, one night, uh, last week, and then a smaller downpour, um, or smaller showers. So, um, that would show up as measurable on that bar chart, uh, if we had shown November. Next chart. And this is unimpaired flow. So even though we had no rain in October, the river was still flowing at, you know, obviously a pretty low level. Um, as we head into the rainy season, these numbers should pick up and hopefully look a lot like average, but we, you know, don't know yet what, what kind of year we're going to be in. And I believe that concludes this report. I do have some, uh, additional information on item three, if you'd like me to go into it, or if people have questions on item two, we should maybe stick there.
Any more questions on item two before we move on? I don't hear any, so move on to number three, there, General Manager.
Okay, Arlene, please. So item three, let's talk about Pure Water Monterey. Um, couple things going on. The stabilization of the Vado Zone wells or the shallow wells should be completed by the end of November. The final deep commissioning for the first two wells, uh, is well underway. So, uh, deep injection well one is complete, and we've actually seen injection rates above the planned capacity, so very effective. And then deep injection well two will be done, uh, this week, and we expect, uh, improvements from that as well. Deliveries of company water, so this is after we fill our operating reserve, were 88 acre feet in September, as we struggled with some of the outages of the shallow wells and, uh, performance issues. 190 acre feet in October. And beginning, uh, December, after the, uh, final conditioning, commissioning, we expect that we'll be, uh, a little over 230 acre feet per month in capacity potential, um, which means we're still somewhat constrained. Next slide, please, uh, for meeting our, uh, delivery, uh, contractual requirements, which is why we need the third deep well and the fourth deep well. Um, those were awarded to, there were two bidders, qualified bidders, and specialty construction won the bids, um, that were awarded at the end of October. The deep injection well three price was, well, you see here, $400,000 higher than the engineer's estimate. It's being funded through Monterey One Water State Revolving Fund, and deep injection well four is within the budget that you approved and is being funded by us. Um, construction will start by the end of November. Um, our staff, particularly Mar... Our staff, particularly Maureen Hamilton and with some help from John Lear, are remaining very engaged as production managers. I'm sorry, construction managers for the agencies. We will have professional construction management as well. And we expect to see first injection in November of next year, and then the second well in February the year following, enabling us during the next fiscal year to meet the annual contractual delivery requirement. So obviously, July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2022. And that's the 3,500 acre feet to California American, plus the potential of 200 acre feet to a drought reserve, plus as much as 250 acre feet additional in a year to build up the remainder of the operating reserve. And of course, it'll also provide the ability to rotate the wells, maintain and continue operation. In doing so, some redundancy and improved maintenance. Next, turning our attention to aquifer storage and recovery. Just wanted to show you kind of finished product from the street. Landscaping's not in at all yet. You can see the finished gate, the finished building. And that's the General Jim Moore Boulevard side. Going to the next slide. This is what's on the other side of the building, the three bay doors. In between what you see here and this event, there was training on site. The SCADA system was vetted, and they got to actual chemical deliveries. And I won't say we're completely off to the races, but it's functional and being put through its paces. Next slide deals with the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project Desalination Plan. CalAM submitted a new revised application to Coastal Commission. I'm sure you all read about it on November 6. And the district should discuss any actions, if any, to intervene in the Coastal Commission process. This is something that District Council, myself, and current Board Chair have talked about. I think that we would, well, actually, General Counsel, if you want to talk a little bit about the nuance between intervention or being an intervener as you can in a Public Utilities Commission process versus what you've learned about the Coastal Commission process, and then what steps we might, if need be, take.
We have reached out to the Coastal Commission staff. We've talked with Marina Coast about the process. The intervention process with the Coastal Commission application is not as formal as with the Public Utilities Commission or as with the State Water Resources Control Board. The means to express interest is by communication with the staff at a letter level. And also, it would be important for the district to take a formal position, if as one, on that. And that is anticipated that those issues will be brought back to the Board at the December meeting for discussion. In the meantime, staff will be communicating with the Coastal Commission to restate the positions that had been stated that are still relevant with respect to the former application before it was devised. But the full discussion of this should come back to the Board at its December meeting.
Great. Okay, next slide. So there are a few other updates related to the GM report. There have been some questions about where things stand with the University of California Berkeley-Hastings Reserve Finch Creek Removal Project. This is a couple pictures of the Ford. This is the access into the reserve, the top one being high water season, bottom one being low water season. And just to underscore that, it is clearly a barrier to free flow of the river at that pinch point on Finch Creek. Next slide. So Berkeley released our grant money for spending on May 11. Things did get slowed by COVID because the university severely strictly limited passage. They've gotten a little bit back on track. They chose two contractors, one for permitting and one for design. Monterey County Resources Conservation District is going to do the permitting with subs. And a firm called Waterways is going to do the design work. I think two design firms submitted bids, and this is the one they chose. There was quite a bit of disparity in the design cost, and this was the both qualified and lower-cost bidder. Waterways did come on site in October, and now they're continuing work with some subcontractors on these things that you see on the chart. And they'll be back in with a tour with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, fish passage engineer to familiarize them with the project. And so they expect to go to the State Coastal Commission for full construction funding shortly, and then begin construction in summer or fall. So I think it's good to see the progress that's being made. I know this was a priority barrier in the watershed. And certainly, it's actually in a statewide database as well as identified. I can tell you that at the zereth minute, the district applied for a $100,000 grant for fish passage removal for this project in order to possibly reimburse ourselves. And we won't hear on that grant. I think it went in October 22 or thereabouts. So we won't hear until after the first of the year. Next slide, please. Additional updates, something that is left to the new board, but we both, A, want our public to understand what's going on, and for existing sitting board members and incoming board members, just to get a sense of it. We have a rotation set under Meeting Rule 2.5, which would have resulted in Director Burn, the Division 4 Director, becoming Chair. But because she did not stand for reelection, we have to go to the fine print. And the fine print basically says, if the Chair has served less than 12 months, that means the rotating incoming Chair, which would be newly elected Director Paul. But if that person has served less than 12 months at the time of the annual December election, then the Board by majority will elect an interim Chair to serve for that year, and then the rotation will return. And so in a conversation, I don't know, maybe a month ago, District Council reaffirmed that what that means is that the rotation is frozen, and interim Chair is elected. Division 4 will stay as Vice Chair and then rotate into the new Chairman position the following year. So next slide. So where that leaves us, looking at the rotation, is next calendar year, the Board will elect. 2022, Division 4. 2023, the supervisory position. 24, Division 5. 2025, Division 2. And by names, I've put those in. And you can see also Vice Chair just kind of slides down a notch every year. So Director Potter, you've got until 2025 to decide not to run for mayor anymore. Otherwise, you're going to be our Chair in 2026.
It's a long time from now.
It sure is. It sure is. But this should give you a sense of what we're looking at. And that will fall to the December Board meeting to kind of sort out that this is what the expectation will be. Next slide. Okay, so next topic, replacement of resigning Board Member. You know, we kind of forgot in this whole thing that Director Evans was on the ballot, well, was to be on the ballot, ran unopposed, and therefore was the duly-elected Division 3 Director. So we want to have her take her oath of office, so she's actually in office in her term, and then resign. So there's no question whether she vacated before someone filled that office or not. So she will fulfill the office and then vacate. So December 14 is our Board meeting, using that as an effective date. Then we will have until December 29, basically 15 days from the effective date to notify the county registrar of the vacancy. Then at the January Board meeting, the Board will need to decide whether to appoint or call for an election. And you could decide to appoint at that meeting. Certainly, back on the December 14 meeting, you know, we'll formally open up the call for applications. It's non-binding. So if the candidates, if there are too few candidates or not great candidates or whatever, you can also extend the period for an appointment or decide to go to a special election. The last day to appoint is February 12, so basically 60 days from the effective date. And then the earliest you could have an election is May 31, which is 130 days from the January Board meeting date. So you can't set an election any sooner because you have to give candidates the time to gather signatures, post their materials, and get on an actual ballot. The earliest regularly scheduled election after that date is in August, and we need to reconfirm that with the registrar. But it appears on their calendar as a mail-in-only election. And then, if it's an appointed Director, the Director would need to run for reelection at the next District General Election, which would be November 1 of 2022. If it's an elected position, then they fulfill the remainder of the term for which they're being elected, which will carry them all the way to 2024. So that's the way it will work. Again, to kind of reinforce what's going to happen, the new Board will decide what path they want to take and call for applications, and then either choose to appoint or call for an election on January 21 or have a special meeting no later than February 12 to do so. And that's the last item I have as information. However, next slide, Arlene. We're going to do a little slideshow. As you know, TMD Creative is now our outreach company consultant. They went out to many of our facilities and took photographs. And Stephanie Locke has taken several of those photographs to string in a slideshow basically on Sleepy Hollow Facility and the fish releases, which have been going on the last two weeks. And then that will conclude any of our business, apart from Directors' Reports under Item 4. So let's have a slideshow.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe that you have one hand showing on the General Manager's Report.
Okay. We'll do the slideshow, and then we'll go back for any questions on any of those items.
Yeah, we're not getting any sound, though. Yeah, I think we have a sound problem. So Arlene, are you seeing, is it just not running in slideshow mode? Or is that the best we could get?
That was a video. Would you like me to show it again? I was hearing sound. Possibly, I can just turn up my sound level, and maybe that would help. Would you like to run it again?
So let me ask a couple of questions. Did the Director see it in smooth time? Or was it blind?
I saw this, just slides and no sound.
Yeah.
I'd like to show, I'd like Arlene to show it again, if that's possible.
Great. Stephanie Locke, or Thomas Christiansen, if you've got any comments you can make quickly, or maybe at the end, just talking about what it is they're doing.
All right, let me bring it up again.
So this is the rearing channel, and you can see that they're pulling the fish out of the rearing channel. And part of this year's program was tagging a lot of the fish with a PICTAG, which allows the fish to be tracked as it migrates its way through the Carmel River, then hopefully to the ocean, and then back again as an adult. This will be really valuable in tracking the steelhead population and seeing how far they go up the river. This is the inside of the rearing channel. And where Bev was looking in was a filter that helps filter the native Carmel River water before it goes into the steelhead facility.
Great, great. Any questions while we have Thomas? That worked better, by the way, on my screen.
Yeah, I agree.
It was a little fast, but he got through it.
Well, see, originally, it was just a musical accompaniment. It was all just really pretty, pretty. So it's better with information, I think, too. Thomas, what's the size differential or breakpoint for those fish that are released in the river versus released kind of at the mouth of the lagoon?
So typically, all of the fish that are rescued in the season are released to the river. It's when you have a fish that is considered a smolt that is actually undergoing the change to potentially go into the ocean, that fish would then be released closer to the lagoon. And typically, we don't see that unless we are having a low rainfall year where the smolts are coming downstream and the river already has dry portions, and the smolts are captured and then taken to the lagoon or almost directly to the ocean, depending on how low the lagoon is.
Great. Well, thank you. And turn that over for any other questions, or otherwise move down the agenda.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Dave, but Thomas, how many? Or what kind of numbers are we looking at on fish being released right now?
So Beverly's still doing the tallies, and they just finished last Friday pulling the last fish out. But we are somewhere in the neighborhood of around 5,000 fish.
And those are going to be what, in the lagoons? Is the beach open to allow them to go into the ocean?
No, the lagoon is still closed. So all these fish were released in the main stem of the river, much further upstream than any of the drying or compromised portion of the river. So no, it's, to my knowledge, none of these fish were released to the lagoon because they weren't undergoing that silvering and smolification process that would, you know, typically have, want a fish to be close to the ocean.
Yeah, because, you know, every morning, I, at Corona, I cross the bridge and see that the Carmel River is pretty much dried up there at what used to be the golf course. So where are these fish being released, downstream or there?
No, the fish are released in the neighborhood of just below Los Padres Dam. They're also being released in the Garland Park area, Robles del Rio area, and on places that we know will stay wetted until we get significant rains. Typically, the release doesn't happen until the river's fully connected. But because of the fire and the concerns of the access to the facility, because of the possible debris flow, we got permission to release the fish a little bit earlier this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the Chair.
Director Brown.
Dave, can you go back to slide number 11 on your presentation? I have a question about the phrase that was used in quotes called "company water."
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, is that public water? Because I identify company as CalAM.
Yeah, it is. It's so, and we call it, different euphemisms, deliveries for customer service. But in the water purchase agreement itself, there's a defined term called "company water." And that means CalAM's up, well, they're 3,500 acre feet. So if we establish an operating reserve, which we have, if we establish a drought reserve, which we will consider if the growers stay in as part of this, then those are different than company water. And then, if there is water produced from the facility that, which there will be, which will go to Marina Coast Water District, that's separate. So distinguish the different waters from the deliveries to them for redelivery to customers. from the deliveries to them for redelivery to customers, that's what company water.
So just, so company water in this context means water that's been delivered from Monterey One Water to Cal-Am, and Cal-Am is now delivering it, and that's why it's called company water?
Yeah, and actually, it's, and this is challenging for people, but we actually own the water. We purchase it from Monterey One Water, and then we sell it to Cal-Am and bill them for it. And so the company water is the amount that's being billable each month.
Okay, it's going to be a little bit of a confusing terminology, at least for me, or maybe it will be for a while anyway, until things settle down. Thank you.
Sure.
And the board questions on any other General Manager's report?
Chair, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you. It's actually for Thomas. On the fish rescue, kind of to go back to Gary's question, rescued about 5,000 fish this year. How does that compare to other years? Is this an average, normal, above normal, below normal? And how has that looked over the last couple of decades when the fish rescue program started? Have the numbers changed much or at all?
Yeah, and I think we need to distinguish between rescues and releases.
Yeah, I wish I had the numbers in front of me, but I would say my gut feeling is that this is a average rescue year. We've had some really wet water years where spawning was really successful. And it kind of depends on the year. We've certainly had significantly less fish in the facility, and we've had significantly more. So I would say this is about average as far as a rescue season goes. The good news is, you know, some of these, we go to some population survey sites, and the population surveys sites this year showed relatively good numbers of fish per linear foot. So I think there's a little boost in the system right now with regards to the number of fish that are being successful.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and if I may, Thomas, with the new facility, do you anticipate that the health of the fish that are rescued and then matured in the facility will be better going forward as opposed to how it was before the facility was available?
We're seeing, I feel that we're seeing the same survival rate as we have in years past, but we have a lot more resilience in operating the facility in compromised conditions, meaning with potential low flows, we can still divert water where before we had problems with the screens clogging and potentially the intake being dewatered because then the intake's been relocated. The facility can handle a higher sediment load because it has sediment basins, and we also have a UV unit to help protect against disease. We're hoping to optimize the UV unit to help increase the health of the fish. There are a few factors that start in the beginning of the fish rescue season during heat waves. Sometimes water temperature is out of the district's control, and that can cause disease outbreaks. But this year was similar to survival rates in prior years.
Thank you.
Thomas, this is Chair. Could you get those numbers for the next meeting that we have in December? It'd be nice for the public to know how that facility is working, and how many fish we are saving and putting back into the river.
Yes, I'll do that. I'll get a tally of rescued numbers per year and the number that were released to the river.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, because, Thomas, I do know I reported a couple months ago, and there's a significant number that were not put into the facility that were counted, and I think the total count's going to be higher. Last year's total count was like 15,000 rescues. But we need to distinguish between those that went into the facility that we're now counting. One of those pictures you could see is a little hand clicker, like the umpires used to use, you know, keep track of things, or that, when you went into the county fair, they used to just click by hand. So they're counting the number that are being released as well or fished out. But we'll get you the, kind of the complete overview, and we'll show how that compares to last year and prior years.
Okay, any other questions for General Manager's report? If not, we'll move along to Director's report, including AB 1, 2, 3, 4, reports on trips, conferences, attendance, and meetings. Do we have any?
Through the Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, this is not a report on a meeting. I just again wanted to thank the board for, it's been a pleasure to work with everybody. But I also wanted to say, it's really been a pleasure to work with Dave Stoll. He's an exceptional General Manager and has certainly moved the water projects forward. And I just want to encourage this board and the new coming board to continue to provide the water projects. The resolution to all the issues that keep coming up, housing, business bounce back, et cetera, is to get off the CDO. And really, the board needs to keep their eye on the ball and provide the sustainable water projects because that is the solution. Thank you.
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 If no other reports, I'd just like to say congratulations to Amy Anderson and Karen Paul for running, and my fact to the whole board there. Molly Evans for not being opposed. Director Potter for being reelected to Mayor. Congratulations. So, and to the supervisor, Mary Adams. I'd like, congratulations to her. She didn't have anybody run against her this year. So I want to thank you all, and stay tuned for next year. Okay? And the next item, we have no public hearings, no action item. Anybody want to talk anything about the information items? None. So, good meeting. I'd like, yes, go ahead.
Excuse me, Chair Edwards, there is a raised hand. So shall I call on this person to speak?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
That could still be Tom Rowley's open.
Yes. I'm trying to unmute him. Let's see if I can do it from here. I do need to give him an opportunity. Yeah, I cannot unmute him. Sarah, I'm going to transfer this to you. It could be the connectivity issue. Are you still in the meeting?
Yes, I am. I'll try.
Thank you.
I cannot do anything on him neither.
Yeah.
If I may, Arlene, congratulations on your retirement. I wish you all the best going forward. I hope you, after COVID, you can travel the world and just enjoy life.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I cannot unmute this caller and...
Sarah, go.
There, great. Thank you.
Good evening again. Sorry, I realize your meeting, I was way back on the item on the General Manager's report, and I want to first apologize. I thought you had unmuted me, and unfortunately, so I didn't hit the unmute. So I apologize for that, Arlene. And secondly, my question was just a quick question, and perhaps it's already been answered by either the General Manager or Mr. Laredo. There was in this, I believe it was one of the September meetings, there was a question on a supplementary EIR for a bypass or a cross-connect for the ASR that would improve the efficiency of the ASR, so many acre feet per month during the intake system. And to my knowledge, I've been watching to see if that update on that report, that improvement to the ASR had taken place. I have not, I've listened to each one of the meetings, but I did not see that's taken place. I would ask you that at the next meeting, you include some kind of an update on that. And also, I want to say to Jeannie, aloha, as well as Gary. I'll see you at the SAC meetings, and also aloha to Molly. Best of luck. Good evening.
And if I can, Tom, Director Hoffman does spend a little time in Hawaii, so that's probably more meaningful to him. So with respect to...
I wish. I can't get over there.
That's right. You can't right now.
Mr. Stoll, in answer to that question, though, that has to come on the next agenda.
That's what I was just going to say. We met as Waterspike Planning Committee at our November 2nd meeting, I believe it was. And there were a series of about 12 or 13 questions that were still outstanding that we've now kind of looked at. We said we'd bring that back to the Waterspike Planning Committee meeting in December, and then advise the new board at the December board meeting.
Okay, any other questions for board members? If not, meeting is adjourned. Hey, he said it's out there.
Arlene, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.